Let's call the meeting, Gordon. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Honorable Mayor Ron Schaver.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Marler.
Here.
Christine Casto.
Here.
Allison Howe.
Here.
Clint Anderson.
Here.
Lisa Northrup.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
Here. Okay, first on the agenda is approval of the minutes of our August 15, 2017 council regular meeting. Has everybody had a chance to review them?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Presented for your approval by a resolution.
Okay. If everybody's reviewed them, then I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution accepting the minutes from the August 15, 2017 regular city council meeting.
Second?
Have a resolution by Christine Casto and a second by Allison Howe. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next, we have a presentation and possible action on a resolution submitting a ballot question to the electors of the city relating to an increase of a 1 percent sales tax, use tax rates to be used for streets and alley improvements and maintenance. Mr. Wells and Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll let Jason go through the language, because I know he's the draftsman of that. But before we get there, I just want to thank staff and members of the committee that have come together to support this ballot initiative. John Brennan has been very helpful, and when I see very helpful, that doesn't come close to explaining all the things that he's done to help the committee and to help staff and the council understand what this, what direction this will take the city and what we need to do to make sure that the citizens are well informed about what they will be voting on. And that's really the process that we want to follow and will have to follow moving forward is to make sure that we provide adequate information for the public to understand what they're voting for. I'd like to thank the members of the committee, many of whom are here tonight, that have been working on this and supporting this and see how this can really impact our community in a positive way. With that, I'll turn the language portion over to Jason to kind of explain that, and I know that there are a few members of the committee here that may want to speak and present the information, so.
All right, so the resolution information we're having is quite standard. The meat of the issue is, if you look in your packet, we, I drafted three different options, kind of based off of the comments from last meeting, wanting to make this read a little bit more clearer, removing some of the language, or at least reordering it. As mentioned previously, the taxpayer bill of rights, which is part of the Colorado Constitution, requires that some of this language is, has to be here, but trying to make it in a way that it's the most easy to read and gets the point across from council as to what exactly it is we're trying to accomplish. So if, in the resolution as drafted, I plopped in there the ballot language option number three, if council would rather do something different, we can make that amendment before accepting and just make sure we understand which direction you want to head and we can make sure that that gets drafted appropriately.
I personally like number three in the way that you did that. I think that that puts the meat of what we're really trying to inform the citizens about right at the beginning and everything. I think that although you said the tabor makes us have to put in that estimate for the first year where it ends up being 2.4 million, to me, that just starts to make everything get a little murky and everything, so I think having the other stuff early is worthwhile.
One of the other things that we've been trying to do is provide information to the public as to why we're doing this, and there have been a lot of different questions that I think we've done a good job handling. John's put a lot of information out on Facebook. We have had some negative feedback, mostly from the same four to five people making some similar posts on Facebook, but for the most part, we're hearing a lot of support from the community that when we look at the options of whether or not to do this, we know we need to fix the streets, we've identified well what the problem is, we have identified what the cost of that will be, and we've identified that there are a lot of different ways we could approach this, but the most effective and efficient way would be through an increase in the sales tax. And so if there are any other further questions, we'll definitely be ready and able to answer those. And, Your Honor, I don't know if you wanted to have those who wanted to speak, speak at this time or at some other time in the meeting as it relates to...
If anybody from the committee would like to come up and speak, I would ask that you sign in on the clipboard next to the, even though we know who you are, Mr. Oder.
I'm Jack Oder. I live in that part of town down here, and I'm the chairman of the committee, the citizens' committee that has been looking at this. We've had a half a dozen or so meetings, and regrettably, I haven't been able to make them all, but I've been to enough of them to get a flavor of what the issues are and the order of magnitude of how big the problem is. We're all a product of our own history and experiences, and almost 50 years ago, I was just getting out of college and looking for a job, and the city manager from Fort Morgan called me and asked me to come out and take a look at Fort Morgan, and I did. The first thing that you notice is the streets in this town, and in those days, they were big, wide streets. Every one of them had curb, gutter, sidewalk, and paving. No place else in this region can you say that. None of the other towns that you can think of around here can say that, not even today. I did come to work for Fort Morgan and learned a variety of things. One was that we did all of our own paving in those days. We had our own batch plant, we had our own gravel pit, we had our own machinery for laying them down, rolling, we had our own machinery for maintenance, and we took care of our streets that way. Fort Morgan was unique and may still be in that we have all of our own utilities. We don't have public service that comes in and serves some of it and things like that. We take care of all of that ourselves. In those days, that meant that there were profits from those utilities, and we could use those profits for doing other various things that the city needed, parks, recreation, libraries, swimming pools, and things like that is where the profits of those things went to. There came a time when the Public Utilities Commission said that each one of the utilities could only make a certain amount of profit, and excessive profits had to be returned, and so it was the normal activity then that those various companies, electric department, gas department, and so forth, lowered their prices until they had a profit margin that was allowable by the Public Utilities Commission. What that meant was that we no longer had the type of funding that it took to have libraries and in parks and so forth. Where we're at today is a result of those decisions that were made a long time ago. Now, I understand you budget a certain amount of money every year for the streets. We've all had access to a great deal of research that has gone on about Fort Morgan and what the condition of our streets are at the present time, and they give us a rating. It's not the worst in the world, but it's a long ways from the best, and it's a long ways from where we really need to be. It seems like every year, we get a little bit farther and farther behind in maintenance and building new streets. That's why we have to find a revenue source that can do that. You, like me, every once in a while, you look in the paper and it says that the city got a record amount of money from sales tax, and to me, that says, great, now maybe we can fix some streets, when you find out you can't do that because of certain constraints and the way the budget process works and so forth. So we don't have a steady stream of money that will keep our streets in a condition that we want them, in a large enough amount, that we would be happy with them. So that leaves us to a fairly limited number of possibilities. You know, when you drive around anywhere in Colorado, it's not uncommon to be a few miles away from what you think is town, not this one, but other towns like up on the Front Range, and you see a city limit sign, you know, and you're not, you're two miles away from town. How do they do that? Well, the reason they're doing that is tax base. They're taking taxes off of that, and that's what they're using in many cases in order to fund some of the things that those cities have. We have never done that in this town. When this city grows, it's because somebody wants to join the town, the city. They request it by annexation practices. We like to keep the doors open, but we don't go out and say, you know, that farm out there sure would be nice if that was in the city, and then we force an annexation and have a tax base. We don't have that. We're kind of left with a sales tax as our only option. We have, it seems to me, from what the research has been that I have seen, that we're about 10 years behind on keeping our streets where they need to be. The money that is projected that would be raised from a sales tax will get us back on track in about 10 years, we'll be back to where we need to be, hopefully. So I don't see that we have another choice. I think we have to do that, and the group that I've been associated with here has been very supportive of it, and I think that it's something that I really encourage you to get involved with. Now, on a personal note, a couple things, and again, this is me talking. We have a certain amount of money that we are now budgeting for streets. If we get more money from the sales tax, a successful sales tax, it would be my hope that you didn't find some other home for that money that we're already using, because otherwise, we're just substituting one pile of money for another, and that down the road is going to mean that we're going to be looking again for some other source of revenue to do the things that we need. So I would hope that you would find a way to really, I understand you may not be able to carve that in stone, but I would be grateful if you would just use whatever enhanced money you would get and add it to what we've already got so that we can get going. The other thing is that I hear comments made about the city council, once they put something on here, can't take a position actively. Hogwash, of course you can, and I would hope that you would, that you really would actively support this measure and let the community know what their leaders are thinking. So I would take questions, but you know a lot more about this subject than I do, so I'll just sit down.
Thanks, Jack. Would you, Jack, would you sign that sheet there for Mr. Brennan?
Sorry?
Would you sign that, sign in sheet there for Mr. Brennan, please?
Otherwise, he has to hunt you down.
That goes on your permanent record, too, by the way, just so you know.
Fail to sign in at council meeting.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
They were informative.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, I'm Alberta Simmons, a former council member for 10 years. I have a letter here I would like to present to the city council. Before I read the letter, I would just like to clarify a few things. I am also a former retiree of the city, having worked for the city for 34 years. 17 years of my, my last 17 years were in the finance department. In visiting with the public, I find that they are a little confused what the general fund really is. So I would like to just comment on that just a little bit. The general fund is basically the revenue that comes for it comes from taxes and fees. The departments that are in the general fund are mayor and council, city manager, city attorney, human resources, general government, airport, police, fire, streets, recreation, parks and cemetery, library, museum, golf, municipal court, and economic development. I think the question's been asked, people are concerned, the electric, gas, water, sanitation sewer are called enterprise funds, and they also do have reserves, but those reserves cannot be used for, towards the general fund. The question has been asked of me, what kind of a reserve does the general fund have? And I've been told that they have $11 million, but that is not all just designated towards the street department. All of those departments in the general fund will do that. Now, how that got to be reserves, and also, we have to keep those reserves for emergencies. You always have to have some money in, in the general fund for emergencies. The 3 percent that we now have, 2 percent of that goes towards operating costs, which you need to stop and think about. It isn't all just going out there to spend on streets. You have all the operating costs of all these departments. 1 percent of that goes into capital improvement, okay? If it's voted in and that changes to 4 percent, 2 percent will still stay for the operating costs, 1 percent will go in for capital improvement, and 1 percent will be for the streets, alley, and infrastructure improvements. So after that, do you have any questions of me before I read the letter? The city of Fort Morgan is discussing raising the sales tax 1 percent. This 1 percent would be used only for street, alley, and related infrastructure improvements. The sales tax has not been increased since 1982. This would bring it from 5.9 percent to 6.9 percent, the city tax from 3 percent to 4 percent. The 1 percent increase will be strictly for street improvements. The 6.9 sales tax would still be lower than Greeley's 7.01 percent, Brighton's 8.5 percent, Denver's 7.65 percent, and the same as Brush's 6.9 percent. We, former mayors and council members, are in full support of this issue for a 1 percent sales tax increase. Signed, myself, Alberta Simmons, council member for 10 years, James Powers, a council member, Terry McAllister, former mayor and council member of Ward 2, Deb Forsted, former council member in Ward 2, Doug Trevithick, former mayor, Don Shoemaker, former council member of Ward 1, Ron Edwards, council member and former mayor, Scott Bryan, council member, Ward 3, Jim F. Green, a former council member, serving two terms in Ward 2. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Alberta.
Thank you.
I'll give you Mr. John.
Very well spoken, Alberta.
Thank you for the signatures. Does anybody else wish to address council or speak on this issue? There are none. I guess we need to come to a decision on which of the verbiage options. We'd like, Kevin has made his comments regarding option 3, so...
Your Honor, also, before you vote, I know that there's been some requests of a little bit of understanding of what we will do if this is passed with regard to the money that's currently budgeted and how we would manage that in the upcoming budget. If this is passed, it is the intent of staff and I think city council and what we've already presented in the general fund, that we would continue to put the $900,000 towards streets, which would be added to whatever comes in from the 1 percent. There's always a lag in the amount of money that's coming in and what we need to spend and what we would propose also, and this would be up to council's ultimate decision, would be to make sure that if we needed that money to do those projects at that level of funding next year, we would pull out of the reserves and start that process immediately instead of putting off or waiting any time for the adequate revenues to come in. So it would be our recommendation that we follow through with what has been expressed as a concern of the community and continue to budget that $900,000, which we have, and then also look at the reserves and pull from the reserves and make sure that we get the projects lined up for next year.
I guess I'm in the same boat as Kevin. I, verbiage on option 3, which is, and there's...
So, Jason, all three of these are legally good to go?
They all say the same thing in different orders. I too like option number 3.
And I like option number 3 as well.
Same.
Yeah. It's the best one, Jason. It's great.
So I can be different?
You can.
I'm good with 3.
Come on.
So, Jason, did you indicate for the resolution that needs to, the verbiage needs to be in there?
The resolution as written includes option number 3, because I too thought that was the best, but my opinion is less important.
All right.
With that, if there's no other questions or comments, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution of the city council, the city of Fort Morgan, Colorado, submitting a ballot question to the electors of the city relating to the increase of 1 percent sales and use tax rates for street projects and maintenance.
Second?
Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Christine Casto. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
And thank you all for your input and support on this. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, you guys feel free to stay around for the whole budget portion of the meeting. It was worth a try.
Can I be?
No, you cannot.
Not even. Next on the agenda is 2018 budget calendar. We have Mr. Wells.
Yes.
I'll let you...
Couple of preliminary announcements before we move into the budget. What you have in your table file is the most updated numbers. I know some of the stuff that went out in the packet have been updated since. We just want to let you know, the printouts in your packet and table file, or in your table file are the most updated version of the numbers. With that, we'll turn it over to the police department and Chief Paul Schultz to work through and present their budget and answer any questions. And, you know, one thing I'll point out is that the police department is special, and we remind them of that regularly, and everyone else did a one-page report. And I haven't met a police chief yet that can do a report in one page, so it's, it's not, don't, don't be surprised, I guess is my point. That's just part and parcel for the course for police chiefs. He does a great job.
If you read your packet, you'd know there's multiple sheets and they cover a large facet.
Yes, I do.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, I did try to get it down to one page. I really did, and I just couldn't do it, so...
You couldn't read the print then, right, because it was too small?
Exactly. So what you have in front of you is a data-driven report for the last five years that is full of different performance indices for the police department, different things that we look at in the world of policing from year to year. Should give you an idea of where we've been, where we're going. For the 2018 budget, we've got several new things that we are requesting, but overall, a relatively modest increase in the budget. One of the things we've talked about is a school liaison officer. This would be a new position added to the police department funded jointly between us and the school district. This position would be assigned to the elementary schools, would be a position where the person hired to do this, it would not be a sworn officer, but would be somebody who would act as a liaison, teaching various safety programs in the school, would complement our approach to school safety quite a bit, would build a strong relationship with the elementary school kids, would teach different things like stranger danger, what the kids need to be watching out for, and also a liaison to the police department, the school district, and somebody who could give some suggestions on school safety, infrastructure. So we consider that a very valuable asset. We're also requesting an upgrade of four officers to the rank of corporal. And I emphasize, these are not new positions, these are existing positions that would be reclassified from police officer to corporal. Currently, about 33 percent, a third of our patrol shifts do not have a formally recognized supervisor on duty. We rely on what we call SOIC, senior officers in charge. They're not specifically trained for this function, and by upgrading four officers to the rank of corporal, it would reduce our liability just considerably, make it safer for everybody. We're also asking for an upgrade of an admin sergeant. Again, this is not a new position, just an upgrade. We have a definite need for staff assistance in the area of administration, doing some of the projects, getting the work done, things of this nature that right now are backing up quite a bit. Overall, we're looking for upgrades in training, community policing, technology, and safety equipment, but again, at a very minor addition to the budget. Willing to answer any questions you might have?
Can you talk about the software maintenance? Line item, it looks like there's about a $12,000 increase in that, or...
I'll let Commander...
$17,000, I guess. And I botched those numbers pretty badly. It's a whole lot more than that.
Yeah.
I think the majority of the increase has been based on, really, technology. We're looking at providing tablets to initially investigators. A lot of times, we'll show up on a scene, I'll give you, a typical example would be on a search warrant, an officer's involved in a case, we need to get a search warrant in order to enter the house. Those can take hours to do. You've got an investigator, an officer working on scene, they can essentially type in the affidavit, get the summary of what's going on, do everything right there on the scene instead of having to go back to the office. They can pull up different kinds of documents that we need to do those types of things, just like I said, as an example for the search warrant. Right now, we have absolutely no in-car computers, and it's not necessarily a laptop, per se, but it will take the place of a lot of the stuff we can do. We can hook it up to a hotspot, we can do Wi-Fi, whatever we need to, to get some of these things done, much more efficient, even to some degree, a little more accurate, since we're actually on scene, being able to do the stuff there. We're looking at trying to get about four of those, and roughly about $1,200 apiece. I don't know why they're smaller but more expensive than a laptop, but that's kind of what is... the way it is. Additionally, we're looking at providing some field training officer software. We've, we're using essentially a program that we made ourselves, probably in 1999. It still works, but it's definitely not up to date. It's a manual search that we have to do to go in to utilize, to go back and use previous data for training, training officers, new trainees and so on. We're looking at doing two, sometimes three, new officers a year. It just, it definitely helps the training officer input that stuff. This is something they can actually do on a tablet. They can do it while they're in the car instead of again having to come back to the office. That there in and of itself is about $2,500. Okay. So those are some of the increases right there. We're looking at about $10,000 just for that, that specific kinds of things right there in addition to what the chief's going to talk about with another upgrading technology.
There's a product here listed as Advento Smart Force. What that is, is it's a software package that will allow the police department internally to communicate better. Right now, passing on information from shift to shift is problematic at best. We are using a dry erasable board where officers come in, they'll write down what happened on the previous shift. The oncoming shift will review that. This system takes information from all different parts of the police department and allow officers in any part of the department to take a look at it on an electronic bulletin board, for lack of a better word. It also keeps it indefinitely where the dry erasable board is erased. This will keep this forever. We can increase communication. I mean, I can't even quantify it so much of an increase. It's going from literally writing down information to a computer database system. It's very popular in Colorado. It's about 20 departments in our state that have it, over 100 throughout the country. It's worked out very well. We have met with the manufacturer and ours, pretty confident ours would increase our ability to conduct business daily in a much more efficient manner.
Right above that, there's an increase in the criminal investigations. What's last, last, it looks like about $3,500 or so difference? Are we, are we seeing more criminal investigations than we had in the past?
Sure. Go ahead. You just started.
Couple of the key things are, these are things kind of not necessarily an increase, but one of them that we don't have a choice about, we increased about $1,000 just for doing blood tests, medical records requests, different stuff like that. It's different kinds of testing that's required just based on really the caseload. So it's not like an increase in technology, nothing like that. It's just, it's just an increase in cost. More expectations from district attorney's offices to how detailed our cases need to be. Unfortunately, those things come at a cost and it's really the medical cost is what it is. Additionally, another thing we're running into are translation fees. As you know, we've got about a 10% East African population and that includes a majority of one language, but there's a couple of other ones. We've seen a huge increase in that. Spanish translators are, you know, a little simpler to find, but you get some of the other East African languages. It's not that easy to do. Sometimes it has to be done over the phone. We can't find somebody specific to do it, but we, there is a cost to that. So we've had to increase that just based on increases over the last few years.
The other additional areas we're looking at is an increase for drug enforcement. We have had a spike in all of Morgan County drug cases. I think everybody's aware of some of our warrant media laden cases that have occurred in the last year and our intent is to address that problem from an enforcement perspective.
Thank you. I got one more question. We, previously when we were looking at approving the pawn shop on Main Street, there was some discussion about it potentially requiring more of an officer's time tying them up and creating some issues. Can, have we seen any of that come to fruition and is, has that had an effect on the budget at all as we see it?
The answer would be yes. We've seen it increase our workload. I mean, there's no way it could not, but we've been able to absorb that increase and at this point has not been a noticeable increase in the budget. So we've been okay with that.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Nope, Dan took all the questions.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. I thoroughly enjoyed your report.
It was excellent.
We didn't care that it was only Morgan one page.
No, not at all.
Keep up the good work, gentlemen.
Now we go to the fire department. Chief Frasco.
Good evening, city council, Mr. Mayor. This year's budget, I've asked for some minor increases. We asked for, one of the big things we wanted to start pushing this year was getting back into having our firemen tested for health and wellness. So I asked for an increase in our first aid and vaccines. We did that several years ago. I want to say five. We haven't done it since and I'd like to start getting everybody tested again, just to protect everyone. The rest of them are fairly minor increases. Just trying to bring up our budget numbers, looking at the past four years, trying to get everything covered. I did increase, I doubled my fire suppression budget, which was, basically covers our fire hose and most of our fire hose is, is at least 10 years old and it's starting to show wear and we've had, this year so far, I think we've had 600 feet that's failed in our testing. So, and we're not quite done with testing. Some of it's been due to just being on fires and getting something burned up and, but others have failed during a test. We have to test it, inch and a half hose has to be tested at 400 PSI for 10 minutes without leaking and, you know, just for our own safety and everything. So we, we want to increase that budget to start replacing that over the next few years. Dues of subscriptions, we increased that because of just general, everything's going up and we have a lot more certifications that we need to keep paying for and, and keeping those relevant. Two big ticket items I did ask for is, I asked for $100,000 to replace the roof over our main station. We have, every time it rains, it's waters just rushing in down the walls inside, excuse me, and a couple of years ago, they did over the engine bay and I believe at that time they wanted to do both of them, but they didn't get enough bids to do it. So this year I'd like to get that fixed so that we don't end up with mold inside the building and, and have that type of hazard. The other, other item I asked for was $20,000 to replace the tires on our ladder truck. And on both of these items, I did estimate high because I don't have official numbers on it. The tires on that truck are supposed to be less than 10 years old and I believe they're more than 15 now. Every year we have the ladder tested and it's a safety issue that we get dinged on every single year. While the tires, in my opinion, don't look terrible, it is a safety issue and that's why I asked for money to, to replace them. That was, that's all I have. If you have any questions.
Aren't you guys' firemen used to water running in down the wall?
Yeah, but mopping, I'm no good at that, so.
I just thought I'd throw that out there.
I just saw that one coming.
Yeah, I think we saw that, capital improvement.
And we're putting away, I assume we are currently putting away for fire truck?
We are. In fact, this next year in the capital budget, we'll be spending up to...
$600,000.
$600,000 for a new rescue truck and that's been saved over the last four years. So that will come out of reserves.
And we're hoping to get that finalized and, and be ready to order to begin of the year. The lead time on it can be anywhere from six months to a year. So we're preparing that. I have a committee working on that.
Any questions for Chief Frasco?
It's been a busy year. It's been, been good. We've ran 347 calls to date and in July, we ran 61 calls and that's the most I've ever seen in the 15 years I've been on. And while it only seemed like two, two calls a day, it wasn't, it was seven calls here, couple of days off, seven more calls. The firemen have stepped up. They're, they're doing a great job and protecting life and property and that's what we're here to do and we love doing it and we help promote the city and make the city as the best it can be. So I hope we're doing a good job and, and your support helps us and definitely the employers. They're letting their guys and women leave to come do these calls. So I, I appreciate the support.
As you stated, it is a community effort with the employers, the city, the individuals that volunteer their time. So with the collaborative effort, I think you guys do a phenomenal job and a great service for our community.
We'll keep doing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Frasco's doing a great job in the fire department. He's made some changes down there that made it a lot, very efficient and I feel safe with that department. So, and we, we, we all should. So now we're to the court and Amanda Dunn will present.
Mayor, council, I've only asked for one increase and it's due to new legislation that's being passed with defendants being afforded an attorney at their first appearance if they're in custody at that time. We've increased it to $10,000. It was previously $6,500. I don't know that that is going to be something that will be utilized. Kind of depends on what direction the court takes. Jason and Jeff and I, as well as John, are kind of in discussion about that right now, but as far as my budget's concerned, that's the only increase that I'm requesting.
Where's that? Oh, never mind.
Okay. Very last line. And then just so you're aware, as of this morning, the court is actually down 535 filings from last year. So we have seen quite a dip in filings since last year. Anybody have any questions?
So is that good news or bad news?
It's bad news.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yours is a very simple budget.
It is. It's quick and easy.
Who's your favorite, who's your favorite defendant? No, I'm just kidding. Don't.
Well, I have several.
Who's your favorite attorney?
Not Mr. Myers. Mr. Myers is the one I see the most of.
I was sure she was going to say, you know, Jason, and then you were going to...
Then I was going to start a fight.
Sorry, Jason.
He's a prostitute.
I'm used to it.
Thanks, Amanda.
Thank you.
Well, Jason, you know where you stand.
We have the streets department. JW is going to present that.
We love the streets department.
Good evening, council, here. I'm here to present our budget for 2018. Trying to keep everything about the same as much as we possibly can conserve. I've got two line items that we did increase. Street maintenance, we increased it from $80,000 to $100,000 and this is in anticipation that hopefully the 1% will pass and we will be ahead of the game. We can take that extra $20,000 out of this budget and get our on-call asphalt companies to come in and patch certain areas of streets, the one streets that don't need the whole thing done, just, just bigger portions, and then we can do a chip seal on top and kind of preserve those streets. So. And the next increase is in my maintenance of heavy equipment. We do have three pieces of equipment that are coming due for tires. So it's the skid steer, our IT-28 loader and our road grader. And what we're going to do, especially like with the road grader and with the loader, we're going to get new tires for those, take the old tires, have them recapped, and then that way we'll have them on standby. So if anything goes wrong, we'll just be able to swap them out and be able to recap the other virgin carcasses and kind of get a good rotation started on those.
Pretty good?
That's the only increases I've got.
Only increases. Well, you'll be busy if we get this sale passed.
It'll be very busy. Yep.
Done. As you heard, Mr. Older, we had all our own equipment and did our own streets.
Yeah, I'd like to know how many streets we had back then in those days.
It could have grown, but...
I'm excited to see the sidewalk replacement program is bulked up a little bit.
It has. It's really done well for us.
Thank you, thank you.
Yep. So.
Well, that's great to see 21 participants already this year.
Mm-hmm. Yep. They're doing really well. So if I don't have any questions on my budget, I'll go ahead and move to my presentation.
Go ahead.
Sure.
So, so far this year on the streets, of course, we follow other departments and stuff around as well of ourselves and trying to patch in what holes we can. Water department, we've done 140 tons of patching so far for ourselves. We've done 52 tons of oil. That's all hot mix and that's pretty much laid in by hand. The guys put them in the holes with loader and they rake it out by hand and, and roll it all in. So, and these are holes that are like, you know, 15 by 15, you know, smaller holes that we'll be able to handle in-house. We've also done 1,648 square foot of concrete paving. We took the opportunity when Barlow was closed to go in there and patch some of them bad spots that were in there and Yost Construction done that for us on our, on our on-call concrete paving. So far, we've laid out 1,800 pounds of crack seal and we've done 12 tons of coal patch for potholing. And we've been maintaining about 20 miles of alleyways. We also handle storm response, not only for rainstorms, windstorms and stuff, but also for, mainly just for snowstorms and snow removal. Right now, we've got about, last year, we used about 168 tons of ice slicer and salt during that year. And right now, I've taken advantage of the early fill discount prices and we've got about 175 tons of slicer sitting on the ground ready for this year. So, and then some of the other things we do is for traffic control. The street department has 11 crew members. They were all flagger certified and have basic traffic control and works on training. Three of us are certified traffic control technicians. Throughout the years, we set up several traffic control zones for other departments as well as our own and we set up all the traffic control for special events like Bob Stock, Glenn Miller, Fall Harvest Car Show, things like that. So we all take our traffic control and stuff like that pretty serious. It's, you know, trying to keep the public safe. And for street striping, we try to get it done twice a year, but we got about two miles of linear lane lines that we paint, eight miles, yep, and several parking areas, yellow curbs, various spots around the city. On the newer streets and stuff, we do thermoplastic striping and we do all that in-house as much as we can. So we can save costs that way, too.
Does that last a lot longer than the painting?
Yes, yeah. Thermoplastic will easily go seven to 10 years. Thermoplastic will usually go seven to ten years before it needs to be redone again. And striping, like Barlow and Riverview, we lay that out there, and two months later, it's gone. So, and actually mentioning that, yeah, we're working on getting that all thermoplastic in and stuff, too. We've got a system now where it'll stick to concrete better, so it'll last longer. Made a little mistake on my signage. We don't have fifty thousand street signs, we got five thousand street signs. One extra zero.
We're still impressed, it's okay.
Wow, that's a lot of street signs.
We also handle the traffic signals, lighting and stuff. The city's got three traffic lights, twenty-one school zone lights, and four crosswalk lights that we all maintain. And also, CDOT's got six traffic lights through our jurisdiction that we help them maintain. So, if they got an issue or something, we'll go out there and we'll see if we can try to figure it out for them, and if it's something major, then they gotta come down, and then they'll fix it out, but we'll secure the intersection till then. Storm sewer maintenance, we've got about sixteen miles of storm line. We'll be cleaning about a mile and a half of that this year with the budget that we've got. In 2016, we did, well, actually, a lot of it went to our new storm line improvements and stuff on South Main Street, which this past few storms and stuff we've had this year since that street's been done, it's really, really showed, yep, it's worked well. 2015, we got about a mile and a half, or one point two miles, excuse me, of lines cleaned and inspected. And then sidewalk replacement program, we manage all that, so any kind of damage on the sidewalks, ADA issues and stuff like that, the city will pay fifty percent. And 2015, we had twenty-six participants, eighteen thousand, one hundred and two dollars, fifty cents went out. 2016, we had fifteen participants and only eight thousand dollars. This year, we done a little advertising for it, and it kind of bumped it up. We had twenty-one participants, then the cost went up to eighteen thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars and ninety-five cents, and we still got more coming in. We manage all of our on-call asphalt patching, on-call concrete services, not only for ourselves but for all the other departments and stuff when they have to demo something, and the street department pretty much signs the contractors, manages the work orders, and turns all that stuff into them. We do the weed control for areas that are in the city right of ways. We've got our three seasonal crew members that usually take care of that. Been, I think, we've been doing a pretty good job on that this year. They've been knocking them down pretty quick, so. We also manage the city mechanic, and he takes care of all of our vehicles, equipment for police department, streets, sanitation, utility billing, engineering, building maintenance, building inspector, and some of the water and wastewater treatment plant vehicles, they bring them in when they got bigger issues and stuff, too. So Bob takes care of all that on his own. Does pretty well, so.
He's a one-man mechanic?
We've got another Gavin that we had him as a seasonal, and we moved him in too full-time, and he's got a lot of mechanical experience, too, so we get him to assist Bob when he needs it. And also, we assist other departments and stuff a lot with equipment needs, and, you know, hauling, loading, whatever kind of work and stuff they need. Right now, we're helping grade out the pickleball and tennis courts for Optimus Park, so closing in on that pretty quick. Street rebuild programs, in 2015, we built three-quarters of a mile of streets at a cost of eight hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents. 2016, of course, this is when we did South Main Street, we got about a half a mile in on that, but a lot of new curb gutter sidewalk went in, because we, like I say, within city limits, we like to keep that updated, and also, a lot of storm drainage in that area was improved. This year, we're building point-six miles of streets. Paving is scheduled to start at the end of September at a cost of four hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty cents. Attached curb gutter sidewalk areas that needed repaired and ADA improvements have been done on all these rebuilt streets at a cost of two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Ask my report for any questions.
So you're ready for the sales tax increase to pass?
You bet, yep.
Do you have an opinion on that?
Yeah, we need it bad. Streets are falling apart faster than we can maintain them, so, I mean, that's basically what it comes down to. So, we've got fifty-four miles of streets, and, yeah, we need some help to get the dollars in here to where we can get that stuff done.
Thank you for your opinion.
Thank you very much.
And now, we're to Parks and Cemetery. I'll have Doak come up and present.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Good evening.
Going over my budget real quick, I didn't have, I had a couple increases. One of the increases was in our landscape and horticulture account, which was just another twenty-five hundred dollars, and this will be used to redo the bulb outs on Main Street, and we'll redo those completely. We will start on those this fall, when the plants have shut down, and we'll dig all that out and hopefully get a little bit of something planted in there this fall, and then we'll redo it next spring and finish that up. That should give us enough money to get something pretty nice in there. Our other main increase will be in mosquito control. I don't know the cost of this, what it's gonna go up to, but we've been on a three-year contract for the last three years. When we got that contract, there were two companies in the state of Colorado. There was Colorado Mosquito Control and Otter Tail Environmental, which we used. Otter Tail Environmental got bought out last year by Vector Disease Control, and Vector Disease Control also bought out Colorado Mosquito Control. So right now, Vector Disease Control's pretty much the only thing in Colorado, so I'm anticipating an increase in costs there. I raised that line item from forty-two thousand, five hundred to sixty thousand. Previous years, ten years ago, we paid over sixty thousand a year when there was just one company in Colorado that did that. Now, the last year, we just paid forty-two thousand, so. I'm hoping not, but there's a good chance of an increase in that line item. Everything else stayed pretty much the same, or I had a few reductions in a couple small Any questions or comments?
And you're gonna do all those bump outs on Main Street, you said?
Yes, yes. Yes, it was the original design that the landscaper put in, and we've had some conversations about wanting something different in there, something with a little more color, so we're gonna see what we can do.
Some of it got a little tall, right? Then some of the things they had back towards the back?
Yeah, it got a little bit tall. Some of the grasses got tall. We did clean it up as best we could, and it doesn't look too bad right now, but we'll try to get something with some more color in there, so.
Well, thank your crew for all their work for getting the park set up for the public events. It always looked really nice, and, yeah, they did an excellent job.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I will go over our annual report real quick. I have a lot of numbers in here that I think a lot of people don't realize everything that the Parks and Cemetery does, so I'm gonna throw some stuff out there. We're, the city parks department is responsible for maintaining nine city parks containing sixty-four acres of irrigated turf, over three hundred acres of open space currently maintained, with another three hundred acres in plans for development, three point seven miles of walking trails, five ponds, three swimming pools, seven softball-baseball fields, eight soccer fields, one inline hockey rink, four tennis courts, six basketball courts, two volleyball courts, one BMX track, two eighteen-hole disc golf courses, four horseshoe pits, skateboard park, six bathrooms, seven playgrounds, eleven picnic shelters, and two gazebo's, and two pickleball courts coming shortly.
And I still want to say, and a partridge in a pear tree.
Yes, that's, we also have the band shell we maintain, as well as helping with special events, set up on special events. I'll give you some of the numbers of, on what we've done last year and what we've done so far during this year. I'd also like to mention the cemetery is also responsible for maintenance and upkeep of approximately thirty-six and a half acres of irrigated turf, twenty-nine and a half of those acres, which house approximately thirteen thousand headstones. And this maintenance includes mowing, string trimming, spraying, weed prevention, maintaining the irrigation system, fertilizing, snow removal, tree shrub trimming, and the prepping and planting of nine hundred and four flowers. They also dig and assist with burials, which come in, run an office, which sells plots, locates the plots, is responsible for maintaining, updating of cemetery records, and assists the public with any matters which they're able to. The cemetery stays plenty busy over there, too. Some of our highlights for sixteen and through this part of the year and seventeen, we've purchased and planted twenty-three new trees in 2016, and two new trees so far in seventeen, with several more to be planted this fall. Park staff removed over thirty-three dead trees in city right-of-ways and parks and trimmed another hundred and eighty-four trees in 2016. So far this year, we've removed forty dead trees and trimmed another hundred and forty-eight through July, and we're still working on that constantly. We've prepped the band shell for eleven concerts or events, delivered picnic tables for seven events, delivered and set up the showmobile for another four events, delivered and set up the portable restroom for twelve events in 2016. And so far, in 2017, we've prepped the band shell for eleven concerts or events, delivered picnic tables for eight events, delivered and set up the showmobile for four events, and delivered and set up portable restroom for eleven events. We've also planted in excess of three thousand annual flowers and maintained fifty shrub beds. Some of our new projects, we removed twenty-eight thousand square feet of sod from Optimus Park to prepare for two new tennis courts and pickleball courts to go in. Over the winter, we installed a shade structure to cover a thirty-eight by twenty-eight-foot seating area and four dugout areas in the softball fields. We did that installation ourselves, which was quite an undertaking to do, if you've seen that structure, but our guys did an excellent job on that, saved quite a bit of money by installing it ourselves. At the cemetery has had a hundred and thirty-nine total services, seventy cremations and sixty-nine burials in 2016, and I'm not sure, but I think that's an unofficial record in them at, as far as we can tell, that's the most, the most services we've had since we've been keeping track. So far this year, we've had seventy-five total services, forty-five of those cremations, and thirty-five burials. She'll notice that the cremations are trending to go higher than the burials, which is a change in the last couple of years. Cemetery also received seven hundred and sixty-four calls and assisted with four hundred and eight special requests in 2016. So far this year, we've received four hundred and seventy-six calls and assisted with two hundred and sixty-eight special requests. So that's just some of the stuff we do. I don't think I've mentioned everything, but I've tried, but there's a lot more to it than just mowing and mowing grass and watering grass.
This is true.
Any questions?
One thing I noticed with your numbers is it looks like we're getting behind on trees. It looks like we're having to remove more dead trees than we're getting new ones in the ground.
We are, and unfortunately, there's been a, the last few years have been a lot of trees that have died that we've been removing. We try to, we try to replace a tree, any time we take out a tree, we try to replace that tree for the homeowner. We're also open to, if a homeowner would like a tree planted there, they're welcome to call us, and we'll, if it meets the conditions, the utilities are clear, and it meets all the conditions that we have, then we'd be glad to plant more trees for homeowners. So we're trying to keep up, but unfortunately, we're not.
But it's hard when you get hit with a string like that and everything, too, so...
Yes, last year especially, we had a lot of trees died off with the warm weather, extremely warm weather into November, and then, all of a sudden, it was down to fifteen, twenty degrees, and it really, really shocked the trees. We lost a lot of trees two years ago from that.
Are the majority of the trees we've lost within, like, our right-of-ways versus in the parks, or?
Most of them are in right-of-ways. We have lost some trees in the parks, but we've, we just planted, I believe, five new trees in City Park last year to help replace some of the trees that have died, also in anticipation of, if those big cottonwoods would ever, would die in the next few years, we're hoping to have some trees already established there to take their place. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Doak. And now, we're to the Library Museum.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. So I have a couple changes in my budget, nothing too major, a couple increases and some minor decreases. I've increased the software maintenance line, mostly due to increase in software maintenance for the automation system. It increases just a little bit every year as the system ages. And we also have our ILS system, which is our, what we use to catalog and basically do anything, check things out, look up books, all those sort of things. And there's a small increase in our general maintenance property line item. We, every year, we have to do just minor maintenances on our HVAC system as the seasons change, so in the winter, when we start to turn the heat on, there's usually something that, you know, comes up that we have to repair, and then vice versa in the summer as well. We also use that for lights and plumbing, so we have a, there are a lot of lights in our building, a lot of bulbs that need to be changed on a regular basis. Sometimes we use it for new exhibit setups, so if we're, if we have our city maintenance come and help us build a new exhibit, then that comes out of that line, too, so. Any questions on budget? So, for my annual report, I've given you a lot of numbers, kind of shown you how things have changed from 2015 to now, and this runs through June. So we're seeing a pretty steady increase in visitors coming to the Library Museum, which is great. Our checkouts are looking really great as well, and now that we have this new ebook service, we're seeing, we've got tons of positive feedback on that. People really like it. It's a great way, not only to have your ebooks, but audiobooks as well, without having to carry the CDs around, because it's all, you can all, you can use your mobile devices in your car, when you're jogging, whatever you, you know, you're doing when you're listening to audiobooks. We've had great attendance for our programs and events. In 2016, at the end of the year, we had a little over forty-five hundred. This year, as of June, we've already had three thousand. We see new cardholders, people signing up for new cards, pretty much every day. I would say, on average, at least two to three people signing up for a library card every day. Our patron PCs are one of our big bringers of people. We, the use of the wifi in this, in the library is huge, and it's a great service for the public, for people who don't have computers at home, people who don't have printers at home, they can print things out at the library, you know, pay a quarter for their copy and be on their way, and they really seem to appreciate that. And also, people who are just stopping through, who are out of town, if, or waiting for a meeting or something like that, they can stop into the library, sit down, hook up to the wifi, and be entertained that way, so that's really been a popular thing. Our meeting room, our community room, is always, always booked up. I mean, there are, there are times during the week when it's empty, but we have a lot of people using that room for various reasons. And some things for the future, currently, we are actually having our new shelving putting, put up. It just started today, so they're, they're working hard on getting our new shelving up. We're gonna have some new teen shelving that's gonna be kind of fun and provide a space for them where they feel comfortable to be in the library, because teens tend to be that one group of people that we have a hard time... that we have a hard time connecting with, but I don't think that's totally uncommon for most people. Um, we also are working really hard, um, this, this summer, we've worked super hard trying to build up our STEAM activities. Um, we, we have our 3D printer up and running, um, that we're very shortly going to be opening up to public use via staff, um, help. We have some robotics, we have some, um, VR equipment, we have, uh, lots of games, and we are going to be getting a, a play table, which is a touchscreen table that has games where people can sit around and play together, so that'll be really fun. And we have, um, a lot of, um, apps loaded on some cellphones that we have for people to play with and some electronics kits and lots of other things that are, um, great for science, technology, and engineering and mathematics. So we're hoping, um, through the, the end of this year and into next year, to really increase our outreach, um, so that we're out in the community and showing the people in the community what we have to offer outside of the library as well as in. Um, and I know we're going to see a huge increase in the ebook usage, and, um, we're going to try to work a lot more on some historical research, specifically really diving into the fort and doing some research on that. Any questions?
Great to see the library continuing to, I mean, the libraries from when some of us were kids is, is morphed into this completely different thing of what people think libraries used to be, so it's nice to see us, you know, moving, you know,
Staying relevant.
Forward and staying, like you said, staying relevant with, you know, what people are looking for, so, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shandra.
Nice work.
And that concludes, I believe, everybody's presentations for tonight on the budget. I want to thank Council for your engagement and for all of the managers who have worked hard to make sure that their budgets are ready for, uh, the next year. And, and thank Jeannie for putting everything together once we're done having the discussions. So, so thanks, Jeannie.
Okay, next, we have a presentation on innovation, strate, strategic plan. Ms. Dunn. Ms. McCoy and Mr. Underwood.
We've got a whole team coming up tonight.
Awesome, all right.
And we're very, very happy to, uh, and pleased to, for them to present tonight, uh, a strategic plan that they've developed in the training they've got to move forward on strategic planning and, or not strategic planning, innovation here in the city of Fort Morgan. So, take it away.
As you can tell, I had to fight to be the lead speaker.
I could tell.
Uh, I think you've all been provided with our strategic plan. So what we discussed is just kind of touching on a few key points of what we're going to try to do within the near future. With Nelson's help, we started a Gateway to Innovation, which is on our internal internet. We posted a question in July, right, July, to city employees, um, about park closure at night, um, whether or not there would be a curfew, what that would look like, whether or not they believed parking permits would be, or, I'm sorry, not parking permits, camping permits, um, would be something that would be beneficial. Um, and we got great feedback on, um, all of those issues. So in the future, we can, we intend to continue to utilize the Gateway, um, on the employee internet to encourage interaction and contribution, um, as this initiative progresses forward. Um, our intent is to launch a new question in the near future that provides potential topics for employ, um, employees to chime in on and provide their suggestions. And topics will be general, but they'll include, um, things such as seasonal staffing or just staffing, hiring processes, uh, business ideas, park rec development needs, and family programs. Um, because right now, employee engagement, we think, is one of our biggest obstacles. Um, we're hoping to see an increase in participation if we provide suggested topics for people to chime in on. Um, and then through managers' meetings, email correspondence, and face-to-face contact, we will continue to promote this initiative and engage employees, managers, and directors. We are looking for top-down and bottom-up engagement, and we do not want any person to feel as though they cannot come to our team with ideas. Um, our intent is to be flexible in our approach and the participants in the group facilitations, and it's imperative that we do not allow ideas to go unnoticed. Um, if an idea is one that we are not able to follow through with at the time, we feel that it needs to be relayed to employees so they're not under the impression that their ideas have no merit. Um, we also believe that we need to have acknowledgement for ideas. Um, we need to be lax at some point, um, how anonymous people can remain, because we want them to be acknowledged. Um, in particular, ideas that are to be implemented and making positive changes for the cities, we want those people to be recognized. Um, so that's kind of where we stand at this point. Um, our, like I said, our next major question is going to be kind of a general list of topics that we want people to chime in on so we can gather ideas, group them into categories, and kind of establish teams from there that we can expand upon.
So on the internet, um, uh, employee portal that you'll use, is that the same thing?
Uh huh.
So, um, will there be a way that, like, let's say I was putting up a suggestion about, like, paid leave or something? And so would, is there a way for me to track, like, when my idea is seen and if there's?
Not currently, there's not. Um, the, when it comes in, it goes to, I believe, John, Matt, Shandra, Jeff, and myself.
Uh huh.
Um, and we internally track them. But right now, there's no response that goes back, because it's all anonymous at this point as to who's presenting the idea.
Cool. And when you first started researching this innovation concept to bring to the city, how many years does it really take for an organization to really, like, buy in and embrace this? Because I think it's awesome. I'm so glad we're doing it. But yeah, I'm just thinking timeline, how long? Do you remember, Jeff? When, I know you guys did training, too.
Yeah, um, I helped Jeff put together the initial, um, kind of background on this. And it's not, it's always evolving. It's not something that you will ever see, like, okay, this is the final product. Um, Google kind of started this whole initiative. Um, they had think tanks and, you know, email messengers and calendar kind of come togethers, and this is what we're going to discuss this day, this is what we're going to discuss this day. So I don't know that there's a set timeline that it takes. Um, I think in order for engagement, it's, it's going to take probably at least a year for employees to feel comfortable, directors to feel comfortable, managers to feel comfortable. Um, and at some point, we want this to be an entire city project. We want citizens to become engaged and also present ideas. So I don't know if it's something that you can say, in one year, we're going to have this totally knocked out of the park. I don't think it's going to happen that way.
Well, and I think the, the other things that we're looking at is, you know, when we talk about innovation and coming up with good ideas, the city of Fort Morgan is full of good ideas and has implemented a lot of great ideas over the years. And we're actually looked at, I think, by a lot of other communities being innovative, and we're trying to enhance that innovation of ideas and things that are currently, uh, coming forward and, and knock down the barriers that keep people with good ideas from moving them forward or from good ideas being moved forward. Um, obviously, there's a lot that goes in, into that. One of the things I really like about the proposal of this plan is that we're trying to engage not just issues that we are dealing with on the council or the, the director's level, but we also want to address the issues at the bottom and problems in individual departments and for individual employees, and have those ideas for the whole organization come from the bottom up and ask for solutions on how to solve our problems from the top down. And I think that this, this is the, the start of a process to try and get there. And I think that they've done a really good job in trying to put together how we proceed forward, and, and I think in a very affordable way.
Looks, it looks very exciting, I think. Employee morale improves significantly when you feel like you are a part of the solution and you are part of moving your community forward. And moving on past that to a point where you feel like, we get a point where you get citizens that are engaged, you know, and even if things like, like the sales tax, you know, if we have ways to engage people and they, you know, you just have more buy-in and it's, you know, it's yours. And I think we're, we're definitely moving, you know, down the right path, and I think you guys are doing a fabulous job of, you know, steering the ship and, you know, picking up people as you go on, so.
My great work.
Yeah, I concur. Um, I have been pushing for Innovation Department or whatever since I saw a presentation at CML two years ago. And I was just amazed when, uh, I think it was Centennial had an Innovation Officer, and, and at that point, he was talking about how much money he had saved the city, but what I was seeing is possibly saving money, but also, you know, changing the way you do things and improving it and everything. And I, I think that you guys have done a wonderful job here of trying to create a system that'll create an environment that hopefully gets everybody to buy into it. And so it becomes part of a culture rather than, you know, the standoffish department or something. So I commend you guys with the way of work that you've done. I can see you've put in a lot of work already.
No, they're way excited. You know, I, I know they're not, they're not saying much, but they, they say a lot in our meetings. They've got very good ideas and, and how to engage the employees and really appreciate all the time they put in.
Bravo.
So we'll move forward.
Good job. Next, we have presentation and possible action on some bids for three separate playground structures. Mr. Duke.
Good evening again. This is for the purchase of three separate playground structures to be installed at Gateway, J.C., and Brenda Joy Parks. Was funded in the two thousand seventeen Conservation Trust Fund with an amount of fifty thousand dollars budgeted. The three proposed playground structures will, will replace three existing structures that have been determined to be unsafe for use and not compliant by CERSA, the city's insurance company. All three of the existing structures that we're replacing are over twenty years old. An advertisement for bids was placed on the city's website on August third and made available at City Hall. The bid opening was held on August twenty-third, and the following bids were received. Recreation Plus, which is Little Tykes, for thirty-four thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars. A to Z Recreation, which is Burke Playground, thirty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty-one. Triple M Recreation, which is Game Time, thirty-eight thousand one hundred and thirty-eight. And Churchich Recreation, which is Miracle, forty thousand seventy-eight dollars. Staff is requesting council approval to accept the bid from Recreation Plus, which is the Little Tykes, in the amount of thirty-four thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars for the three separate structures. Staff is also requesting approval to purchase construction materials, mainly the concrete, needed to install all three playground structures not to exceed another thousand dollars. Therefore, staff is requesting council approval of expenditures not to exceed thirty-five thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars for the purchase of the three playground structures and construction materials needed to install them.
Are we looking to install these this fall?
It depends on when we receive them. I'm hoping to. If the ground's frozen too bad by the time we get them, then it'll probably be next spring. But we will get them in this fall, and we'll, we'll install them all ourselves. And that saved quite a bit more money again by doing the installation ourselves. I have a pretty good crew at, at doing that kind of stuff, so take advantage of them.
So what are we replacing, and what are we replacing them with?
It's, all of these structures were for the two-to-five-year-old, uh, age group. There are older structures that are rusting out. The, the spacing on the, the guardrails weren't quite up to, to the current codes, which have changed in the last few years. Um, the, the gaps in them just weren't, they weren't safe. Our CERSA inspector, um, last year told us that we needed to work on removing those and replacing them, and that's what we're, we're hoping to do.
So you're not getting rid of the merry-go-round at J.C. Park, are you?
No, no, they're, they're the two-to-five-year-old, small, little, uh...
Dan really likes that one.
That is the most popular playground piece of equipment.
It is.
Only one in town.
My kids love it. Don't get rid of that one.
Second, second.
No, we're, we're just replacing the small structures that had, um, a couple climbing events and a couple slides on them, and we'll replace them with the same, same basic stuff, just newer and a little bit better, and they'll meet, meet code.
Thank you.
We have cameras at those parks, so we can see if it's those two that are on the merry-go-round, just saying.
You know, everybody has a camera these days. I'm sure you can find something on YouTube.
Any questions, any other questions?
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution, um, to approve the bid from, to accept the bid from Recreation Plus, Little Tykes, in the amount of thirty-four thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars for three separate playground structures to be installed at Gateway, J.C., and Brenda Joy Parks, and also to, um, approve the one thousand dollars worth of, um, construction materials to install the structures.
Second. I have a resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Clint Anderson. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Have a look.
No, we just got to keep those two off.
Thank you.
Yes.
I, I like it, too, Dan.
And I believe I'm up again?
Yep.
Okay, well, presentation on possible action on bids for a trailer-mounted air compressor for the parks. Mr. Duke.
Okay. This is for the purchase of a trailer-mounted air compressor, as approved by, in the two thousand seventeen capital improvement budget with an amount of twenty-seven thousand dollars. This will replace a nineteen eighty Joy air compressor that we're currently using. That is only one hundred CFMs compared to the one we're hoping to purchase at two hundred and ten CFMs. Uh, we've had ma, a lot of problems just keeping this air compressor running the last few years. And with the, the smaller size, uh, our irrigation tech has had to really baby it through getting, charging up one section of line and then isolating it, coming back, and trying to keep that line pressured up with the compressor we have currently. New compressor will make the, the job of blowing out our irrigation systems much easier. We'll also have other uses for that compressor, too. Uh, not as often, but we do use it for jackhammer to, uh, remove concrete and, and other things, too. We did receive four bids. Uh, the first bid was from DBC Irrigation Supply, a Kaiser two-ten for twenty thousand five hundred and ten dollars. CLS had the second bid for a Solair one-eighty-five, nineteen thousand nine hundred. Technology International, a Sullivan Palitac one-eighty-five, nineteen thousand nine hundred and fifty. And a Blue Line Rental LLC, an Atlas Copco one-eighty-five for twenty thousand two hundred and twenty-seven. Staff is requesting council approval to accept the bid from DBC Irrigation in the amount of twenty thousand five hundred and ten dollars for a trailer-mounted air compressor. We're hoping to go with the compressor that's a little bit bigger, about twenty-five CFMs bigger, for only six hundred more dollars. We thought that would be the better buy for, for the price. I think that extra twenty-five CFMs can make a pretty big difference in some of the, some of the stretches of pipe that we have to charge up to blow out those systems. I think it might make quite a bit of difference.
Find the weak spots in your irrigation system.
Yeah, yeah, we might. It's not going to know what to do with the, all this pressure now.
There you go.
Did, did our, um, proposal or our request for, for bid, um, specify a specific PSI?
We did. We specified a, a minimum of a hundred and eighty-five CFMs.
So they all had the opportunity to bid something that was a two-ten?
Right, right. And, and I'd done some research and saw that most, most of that size range started at one eighty-five and went up to two-ten or a little more. Um, so we wanted to make sure we had the, at least the one eighty-five. Like I say, the one we have currently, I think, is about a one hundred. They sell one thirty-five, it's a pretty common size. And then after the two-ten, it goes up to like three eighty-five, which... And then after the 210, it goes up to like 385, which would be way more than we need.
You'd find all kinds of weak spots.
Therefore, staff is requesting council approval of expenditures not to exceed $21,000 for the purchase of the trailer-mounted air compressor and an additional 50-foot of air hose to be used by the Parks, Parks and Cemetery Department.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution accepting the bid from DBC Irrigation Supply in the amount of $20,510 for a trailer-mounted air compressor. And also allowing for an expenditures not to exceed $21,000 for additional 50 feet of air hose to be used by the Parks Department. Second.
I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup, a second by Christine Castobal. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Be careful with all that new power.
Mm-hmm.
Next, we have a presentation on possible action on a resolution accepting and authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to extend the contract between City, Western Area Power Association for Consolidated Facilities Arrangements. Mr. Nation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. What we have in front of you tonight at what we consider our west substation, it's the one out on, right off of the interstate towards Log Lane. It's where we take part of our power, we can drop off of the WAPA, WAPA lines and then take our electricity into the city. It is actually a completely controlled and WAPA-built substation. They allow us to occupy a very small corner inside their building and then out in the actual infrastructure. When they did that, they had the city just enter into an agreement that allows us to occupy space within the facility. That agreement was up two years ago. The agreement is up for an extension this, this year. Originally, it was just going to be a two-year extension. I asked if we could do a longer term because we don't foresee any reason that that agreement shouldn't just continue with some length. They came back to us and said they would accept a five-year extension, but that was kind of all the further they wanted to go at this time. So we agreed that that would be okay. So what you're, what you see in front of you is just a copy of that extension for five years with WAPA. It's kind of a, it's a no-money type of deal. If we make improvements within the facility, we pay for our improvements. If they make improvements within the facility, they pay for their improvements. That's the, the basis of the deal and that just allows us to occupy that space in there. So, so I'm just looking for authorization to have the mayor sign that contract extension with WAPA. Be happy to answer any questions.
How does this make your life easier?
Um, if we had to build our own substation to house all of that, yes, we would be talking a lot of money at that point. So this definitely saves us from having to put the money in towards our own substation and obviously all the security and everything that goes with that. So this is great.
It's actually one of our two connecting points for incoming power.
Yep. Yep. The other connecting point, we completely control the, the substation at this point and this is the one we share with WAPA, so.
What kind of money are we talking about?
To build a substation? Potentially, we just had this conversation on another project and depending on how you set it up and then how we have to step down and everything, you could be looking at a million-dollar expenditure fairly easily for all of the equipment that's involved in a substation. When you step down from transmission voltages to, then we step down into secondary transmission before we then put it out into distribution. That substation has distribution feeds that come out of it. We would have to pull all of those distribution feeds out, run them through that type of step-down and then run them back in through our distribution system. So, yeah, it would be quite costly endeavor to build our own substation, so.
Do we really get any power from WAPA right now?
Yeah, yeah. We, depending on the time of the year, we receive somewhere between 30 and 40% of our power through WAPA, so.
Well, I wonder if they've been going with more temporary agreements, we ask for something longer and they come back with five years.
It was just a two-year, yeah.
Is there a suggestion that they may be planning something?
No.
So that's not something we need to be looking at in the future?
No, there, when they first shot this over for approval, it had just the two-year term because that's the standard term that was in the contract. And Jason even asked, he's all like, well, would they, you know, you know, consider a longer term? And when we asked, they agreed, so I wasn't going to push for anything further than what they had, so.
Similar to agreements or contracts that we do that only go for a two-, three-year period?
The, the original contracts dated like, I forget the year, like 1996.
Yeah.
And so I think part of the issue, a couple of years ago when we went through this, was the agreement itself is somewhat dated and they wanted an opportunity to update it. And I guess they never got around to it. So that's kind of where we're at. I would anticipate, hopefully in the next five years, rather than continuing to amend a contract that's over 20 years old at this point, coming up with a, a newer agreement that, that resolves these, whatever concerns they may be having for the long-term sustainability of this arrangement and then entering into a longer-term arrangement again. But that's kind of why we're doing these small terms, is that we want to stay there.
Yeah.
Our bargaining chips are smaller than theirs.
And we've got a really good relationship with WAPA. I know Brent meets with them. They have a shareholders or stakeholders meeting about every quarter next week. And, and if they have things that come up, they make us aware of it. They're very transparent in how they run their business and unlike other groups that, that are out there that you could belong to, they're very good to work with. And if they had something coming down the pike, they would tell us. They'd say, hey, we've got something going on as, you know, that, I'm sure they'd give us plenty of notice before they kicked us off based upon the relationship that we have with them today, so.
My guess is that this portion of WAPA that we're dealing with on this contract, they are still negotiating their firm energy contracts with all of their parties. We renewed ours two years ago. I can't remember who was all on council when we came in and did that extension. They are still negotiating with parties on that deal, even though we renewed ours over two years ago.
And it's a good deal.
Yeah. And they're still trying to get parties to get those contracts taken care of. So they're probably still tied up in power side of it and the facility side of it may be what they concentrate on next, so.
That's good for you. You don't have to worry about this for five years.
Yeah, it's, yeah. For us, we enjoy being out there. They provide all the security out at that substation. The minute you unlock the gates, their security system kicks in. You have certain procedures that you have to follow through, otherwise they have officials out there wanting to know why you're there. So, because it's, it's the federal government, so they keep those tabs on their stuff.
Cool.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution accepting and authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to contract number 95-LAO-856 between the City of Fort Morgan and the Department of Energy Western Area Power Administration.
Second.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Lisa Northrup. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, we're to public comments and audience participation for items that were not on the agenda.
Anybody?
Seeing none? Reports by officials and staff. Mr. Wells?
You know, things are going great in the city right now. We had a three-day weekend and I think people got a little bit of R&amp;R. Got a lot of projects going on, a lot of great things coming down the line. I know we're just finishing up the, the final testing, light testing on the fiber optic. We're working forward with ALOA on a contract that hopefully will get tied down. We had a good meeting with them last week and so things are moving forward in the fiber optic world. Parks reconstruction and outfitting, upfitting, whatever you want to say, say is coming along really well. You still see a hole over in Optimus, but they're planning on coming in and doing some work on that here shortly. So overall, projects are moving forward, streets projects are moving forward. And, you know, we appreciate the patience of the citizens when we disrupt things in their neighborhood, but they always come out better, so. With that, I know the, the chief would like to say a few things, so.
On Monday, September 11th, we're having a remembrance ceremony at the police department outside in front of our building to commemorate 9/11, and the public is invited.
At what time?
I'm sorry?
What time?
9:30 AM.
9:30 AM.
Yes.
So I just wanted to throw this at council because there hasn't been a lot of conversation about it, but Pedal of the Plains is coming, but not to the extent that it has arrived in the past. Brush is the host of community this year, so the century riders on their 100-mile bike adventure through eastern Colorado will pass through Fort Morgan on the weekend at the car show. But I know I coordinated with the chief and his staff. We've got them headed down West Street to 144 and ultimately Main across Rainbow Bridge and out of town. So an event application was submitted, but for our purposes and pulling some bollards out for access to the bridge and otherwise, I don't think we'll see really any impact and in some ways, notice they're here. There will be a rest aid stop set up at our Parks Department parking lot for any first aid or issues that riders are experiencing. I just wanted to give you guys a heads up. There's been some press tied around it and otherwise, but no real impact here other than they're passing through.
An interesting factoid that was told to me today about Fort Morgan because we are the capital of everything. You know, an engineer from the, is it INEL? Anyways, INEEL? He's from Idaho and the federal guys that do all the, I mean, this, this guy's, he, it's a good reputable source, I guess, is my point. But, you know, we had the solar eclipse and solar eclipse happens regularly in different places and there's only one place mathematically that they've calculated that there will not be totality covering the sun, and that's Fort Morgan. So we are now the capital of sun rays because we won't ever be in totality of being blocked out. Isn't that true, Jason?
Very reputable source, my father-in-law. We have tantalizing discussions in our household. He's a nuclear engineer. And so that, that came up in, in our conversation. He had seen Fort Morgan in some of his, his, I don't know, industry research or otherwise, but capital of sunshine here in Fort Morgan.
Capital of sunshine, never in the path of totality.
Market it, Josh.
We've got sunshine and, never mind, leave it alone. But that's what we've got going on. Thank you. Any questions?
Useful information.
Yes.
Bids, meetings, and announcements, Mr. Brennan.
Thank your honor, there are no bids currently. On September 11th at 4:30 PM, the Planning Commission will meet at City Hall. September 12th at 1:00 PM, the Airport Master Plan Advisory Committee will meet at the airport. The Senior Center will meet on September 12th at 1:30 PM at the Senior Center. And the Library Advisory Board is scheduled to meet September 18th at 4:30 PM in the community room. The next city council regular meeting will be September 19th at 6:00 PM. Chandra mentioned the shelving project at the library that started today. That's supposed to last about four days. It could conceivably go longer, so hopefully by the end of this week, that will be completed. But in the meantime, it'll be kind of a hard-nar-dust situation at the library. And the Fort Morgan Police Department is hosting another citizen academy. It starts next week on September 11th. The deadline to sign up is this Friday, September 8th, and that's a free thing. There are still spaces available.
How many do we have so far in that?
I am not certain. I just know that we, there are spots. Paul might know.
We have plenty of room.
I think we need to sign Dan up.
I think it would be fun. If I had the time, I'd do it.
Maybe he'd ask a question.
I did the very first one when you started. It was pretty interesting.
The police cars is fun as the merry-go-round.
One thing I learned from it, don't test the canine unit. With that, next on the agenda is an executive sessions for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on a specific legal question under CRS Section And the following additional details are provided for identification purposes. River View comments. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session at this time.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We will be moved to executive session.